Good evening. We will call to order the special meeting of the Folsom City Council on Monday, December 7, 2020. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Aquino.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilmember Alex Chalamchirla and Rodriguez are in attendance.
Okay, and if you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight. This is a very happy occasion where we're going to welcome two new colleagues to the City Council, and also a bittersweet occasion when we bid farewell to a longtime council member who helped us out for a couple months, and we greatly appreciate that. Thank you all for wearing a mask while you're here in the chamber. Please make sure it does cover your nose and your chin. Believe me, nobody wants to get the coronavirus. If you need a mask, we do have a box of them back there. Before we get going with the rest of the meeting, I do want to take just a moment of silence for our beloved Vice Mayor Ernie Sheldon, who passed away on November 13 and who was laid to rest last week. So if you please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda updates?
You have no agenda updates this evening.
Okay. Then that brings us to business from the floor. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda, but please understand that because they are not on the agenda, state law prohibits us from deliberating or taking any action. Do we have anybody who would like to address the council on business from the floor? You're not aware of anybody? Nobody seems to be coming forward. Okay, we'll move on to the next item then, please.
Your next item this evening is the Consent Calendar. You have one item, which is reciting the fact of the general municipal election.
I'll move Consent.
Okay. Anybody? I assume nobody has any questions. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Moran.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn things over to our City Manager, Elaine Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I really just wanted to recognize and acknowledge our outgoing City Council members this evening. Councilmember Moran, I'll start with you. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your service to all of us. You thought you were finally done with us, and then we drew you back in, or we drug you back in, with very little notice and with an amazingly positive attitude. You willingly and ably stepped up in and filled the council's vacancy during a particularly challenging tumultuous time to govern and lead. It felt like the council never missed a beat, thanks to your expertise, experience, sense of calm, and wry sense of humor. I am personally and professionally thankful that I was able to eke out another few months of having the pleasure to work with you, and please know we are so grateful for your service. Thank you, Councilmember Moran.
Thank you, Elaine.
And Annette, Ernie Sheldon's daughter, is here with us today, so I just want to acknowledge her, and we are all so sorry for your loss. Vice Mayor Sheldon, I have a feeling you're listening. We miss you deeply. Your children and grandchildren miss you deeply. It was amazing and beautiful to hear the legacy of your life summarized at your funeral last week. Ernie, in my many years of working with you, and particularly the last two and a half years as your City Manager, you were always a dedicated public servant. You were never afraid to jump into the trenches to fully understand issues from the resident's perspective, and you were a consistent and persistent soldier for the underdog. You were a lifelong learner and doer, thriving intellectually and physically well into your 80s to the benefit of all of us. We could count on you to serve in fireworks booths in 110-degree temperatures, actively advocate and negotiate on complex issues during council meetings stretching until well after midnight, dedicate countless hours to our youth athletes and our veterans, and thoughtfully send flowers and candy to so many of us on so many occasions. Ernie, thank you for your wise words over so many special Waffle Barn lunches, and in your living room, and even in your hospital room. I could always count on you for the historic, important insider backstory to almost every city issue. Whenever you and I would talk about the rigors and challenges of long hours of leading, I would always hear the refrain "family first" from you as a gentle, kind reminder. Your family did always come first, your beloved immediate family, your son Ernie and your daughter Annette, and also your extended community family. Thank you for that, and everything else, Ernie, may you rest in peace. If I could now ask Councilmember Moran to step down from the dais, and I know Vice Mayor Sheldon is doing so in spirit as well. I can't see over there.
He's in the back.
I have no sightline on that table, so I don't know what goes on over there. Thank you, everyone. So please join me now in welcoming our two incoming council members, YK Chalamchirla and Rosario Rodriguez. As I shared with both of them at a special orientation we convened last week, both YK and Rosario are to be commended and congratulated for conducting superior campaigns during unprecedented campaign conditions. They both had to figure out how to reach voters through non-traditional methods due to the pandemic, and both were successful in doing so with unique, personal approaches. Both are outstanding additions to the City Council, and Folsom is so lucky to have such excellent leadership at the dais. By way of background, Councilmember-elect Chalamchirla has served on both the City of Folsom's Parks and Recreation Commission as well as the Arts and Cultural Commission. He has also served as a county-level board member for the American River Parkway Advisory Board and is a member of our Folsom Community Service Day Steering Committee. YK worked in public service for almost 25 years, beginning with government work in India and Singapore, and most recently with the State of California. In 2019, he started his own IT firm in Folsom. YK has served in various PTSO roles in Folsom's public schools and has volunteered for various community-based nonprofits, including Heart of Folsom, Friends of Folsom Parkways, and Powerhouse Ministries. He frequently hosts California State Jobs Awareness Workshops to share public sector job opportunities and help others navigate the complicated state employment process. YK and his family relocated to Folsom from the Bay Area in 2002, so welcome, YK. Councilmember-elect Rodriguez is the owner of a restaurant in Folsom's historic district. She was born and raised in the heart of San Francisco, which was influential in the style and design of the restaurant she later opened in Folsom. Prior to becoming an entrepreneur in 2016, Councilmember-elect Rodriguez spent 24 years in healthcare management with one of the Sacramento area's largest healthcare systems as her most recent employer. She also served on the city's Historic District Commission for three years. Rosario currently sits on the Board of Directors of both the Twin Lake Foods Bank and the Folsom Rotary Foundation. She is a past Board Member for the Folsom Chamber of Commerce and the Folsom Economic Development Corporation. Rosario and her family have called Folsom home since 2008. Rosario and her husband Paul are guardians to their 14-year-old grandson, Antonio, who is a proud Folsom High Bulldog. With that, could I now please ask Councilmembers-elect Chalamchirla and Rodriguez to stand, you're already doing so, so that City Clerk Krista Fremantle can administer the oath of office? Oh, don't make me listen to my voice, please.
Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely. If I can have you both raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Aye, or sorry.
YK Chalamchirla.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilmember.
Could I please now ask that, could I please ask that our new council members take their seats on the dais, which is, with social distancing, is down here, these two tables?
My lovely colleague.
So nice. So Councilmember Chalamchirla, whenever you're ready, are there any comments you'd like to make at this time? And you can press the button on the microphone, and that will give you sound.
Thank you. I want to start this with a big thank you. Thank you so much. So many members are here. So I'll start with a big thanks to my parents, who are not here, but they are looking at me and feeling proud. And I was born in a small town, they're illiterates, but they believed it. They believed in me. They believed in me, and I'm here, and they believed in hard work. And my family, they felt the same way, you know? Give our support. He is a hard worker. He can achieve anything. Otherwise, my, won't let, my wife don't let me step out from a decent senior leadership job last year to do my campaign. So my family believed in me, my kids, everyone. So I'll start with that, and it is a very touchy, and I came to this country almost 20 years ago, but I'm one of you, and I'm going to work hard to do the best to this city. On the special note, I want to recognize the people who supported me, helped me, and Mayor Miklos, and Mr. Andy Maureen, thank you so much, and our sir, I know he's not here, but Mr. Ernie is listening, and our Eric King, who are all the mayors before, and Roger, you know, he's fresh ideas, and he was inspiring me, the way, you know, we can run the campaigns, and he's a big supporter of me as well. You know, I want to sincerely thank all the previous leadership of this City Council, and also local leaders. There are so many people, including Roger Zittle and Nick, the music store, and I can go name on and on, on and on, but, you know, there are so many people because, because I was in ICU in last July for three nights. My wife said she was not sure I'm coming back or not because of the preliminary embolism. I was struggling, and when I step out with a strong desire, I want to serve this community. Hence, I had to do my campaign much better. When I asked for help, so many people came forward to help me in so many ways. I know so many honks and so many waves. Probably you all might have seen me more or less in every intersection in Folsom. You know, I was going through our 20, you know, tomorrow meeting, there is a traffic speed limits one. I was thinking myself, I know exactly how many miles they will go on this street because I'm a direct observer person. So anyway, so many people came and thanked me, and when I was on the ICU bed, I sent a note to Mr. Bad Franklin, we are here, or looking at, or Reflection Church, Sharon Henry, and Hindu Temple in Folsom, and BAP's Temple. They were all praying for me. I was on ICU bed. I want to recognize each and every one, least but not last, last but not least, all of you, the Folsom residents, who waved me back, who gave me the support. YK, you can do. Hence, I'm here, I'm going to do my best to serve this community. Thank you, everyone, once again.
Thank you, Councilmember Chalamchirla. Councilmember Rodriguez, are there any comments you'd like to make at this time?
Sure. Oh, yeah, it's on. Okay, good. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'd love to share a little bit about myself. I am a native of San Francisco. I moved out here in 2008. I am a first-generation Mexican-American. I grew up from, with immigrant parents. My parents came to this country in the 1960s from Tarrimoto One Huata, which is in central Mexico. I currently am the owner of Sutter Street Chocoria. Opening my own restaurant was truly a highlight of my life, just because I, growing up as a child, I went every single year to Mexico, and I was around so much food and so much culture. I really enjoyed that. I did spend 24 years in healthcare. I loved that career, but doing what I do now is, just doesn't compare. Shortly after opening my business, I got very involved in the community through service and volunteerism, and I really enjoyed and loved, came to love the City of Folsom. In 2019, I noticed something while sitting in the pews out here, and that was the lack of ethnic diversity. Diversity was really important to me, and so running for City Council was truly an amazing, I think Folsom did an outstanding job in electing its first Asian-American to the council, in addition to the first Latina to the council. And so I think that is really big. I think that, I think a very strong message was sent with that. Going through that campaign was really quite an amazing experience. I am really grateful to the team, Bruce Klein, Claudia Goss, Samantha Davidson, Tanya Morales, Diana Pena, Diana Laney, and Jennifer Lee. I could not have, I could not be sitting up here if it weren't for the help and assistance that you guys gave me for the past nine, 10 months. And of course, my husband Paul and Antonio, because I turned my house inside out, Post-its all over the house, and it was quite a fun experience. To the City of Folsom, I'm a very hard-working woman, and I will work hard for the City of Folsom, and I am, it is a pleasure to sit up here and serve you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and welcome. I know you both are going to bring a lot of enthusiasm and energy to the council, and we're, it's our pleasure to serve with you, so welcome. Krista, you want to call the next item, please?
Yes, your next item this evening is the selection of a mayor and vice mayor for the year 2021.
Okay, and before we get to the election, I want to take just a minute to thank my colleagues, past and present, for entrusting me with this role. This has been an unprecedented year, but I have honestly, I can say that I've loved serving as mayor, and, you know, I was thinking the other day, it is a lot more work to be mayor. It's a lot more time-consuming, it's a lot more work, and we are fortunate that we can trade that duty off with each other. And I was thinking about our fantastic city staff, particularly our City Manager and our, her executive management team. They do not have the luxury of trading off, you know, taking a year off their job and rotating it with somebody else. They do those jobs 24/7/365. So thank you, guys, for all that you do, Elaine, and your executive management team and all the city staff. So with that, I know we have a ballot. I'm going to go ahead and be a little bit presumptuous here and tell my colleagues that, you know, while Vice Mayor Sheldon was very ill last year, he wasn't always able to participate as fully as he wanted, and Councilmember Kozlowski was a great sounding board, he was a great confidant for me, and I think he brings a calm to this council, much like Councilmember Moran did. So I would encourage you and ask you to support Councilmember Kozlowski for mayor for the coming year. Would you like us to just fill out the ballots and pass them to you?
It's your discretion, yes.
Okay.
So while you're filling that out, I'll explain. So just a quick explanation, we have used a balloting process for our mayor and vice mayor selection. You'll also see us do it for commission appointments, but what it, each council member completes their ballot, turns it in to me, and then I will read them out. They'll be tallied on the screen so you can see.
YK, do you have your ballot down there to fill out?
Yes, he does. I'm just making sure they had all the mayor ballots. So Councilmember Howell votes for Mike Kozlowski. Councilmember Aquino votes for Mike Kozlowski. Councilmember Chalamchirla votes for Mike Kozlowski. Rosario, Councilmember Rodriguez votes for Mike Kozlowski. And Mike Kozlowski voted for Mike Kozlowski.
Congratulations, and for reasons unbeknownst to me, the, the person who started this meeting as mayor just continues running the meeting until the end of the meeting. So Mayor Kozlowski will take over running the meeting tomorrow night. So on to the next item, please, Krista.
So if I can have you all complete your ballots for vice mayor and pass them down again, if you can put your name in the upper corner so we know whose ballot is whose, please. So Councilmember Chalamchirla votes for Sarah Aquino as vice mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez votes for Carrie Howell as vice mayor. Councilmember Howell votes for Carrie Howell as vice mayor. Councilmember Aquino votes for Sarah Aquino as vice mayor. And Mayor Kozlowski votes for Sarah Aquino for vice mayor. So Sarah Aquino will serve as vice mayor for 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to new business. We invite all of you to stay. This is a very important topic, but if you leave, you will not offend us, so. Next item, please, Krista.
Your next item this evening is New Business, item number five. This is review of proposed Sacramento County Urgency Ordinance adopting penalties for violations of public health orders addressing the COVID-19 pandemic and direction to staff. Presenting tonight will be City Attorney Stephen Wong.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council. I am trying to send the proposed draft county urgency ordinance to the projector. Here we go. So tomorrow, December 8, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors will be considering a proposed urgency ordinance, which, if passed, would levy monetary sanctions and penalties for violating the county and the state public health orders. The urgency ordinance requires a supermajority vote of the Board of Supervisors, and as currently drafted, would be enforceable everywhere throughout the county, including incorporated areas such as the City of Folsom. And allow me to scroll down to the penalty provision. This is in Section 8. Penalty, as proposed, is as follows. For non-commercial violation, minimum $25, up to a maximum of $500 per violation. And for commercial violations, a minimum is $250, up to $10,000. And staff respectfully request that the council discuss the urgent ordinance as crafted and provide direction to staff, if any. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Wong? Well, I do, so I guess I'll start. First of all, is, is, are the current, is the current public health order legally enforceable?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the current health orders, both the county and the state health orders, are legally enforceable.
Okay. And what mechanism or process currently exists to enforce them?
The enforcement mechanism is through a criminal citation process, a criminal prosecution process, and violations are punishable as misdemeanor if prosecuted by the district attorney.
So currently, it would be accurate to say there is a way to enforce the order, there just really hasn't been the will to enforce the order, because as far as I know, all law enforcement agencies in the county have taken an educate rather than cite approach.
I think that's a fair statement, Madam Mayor. Since everybody knows that the businesses are hurting, they have been hurting, it's even more difficult to have to criminally prosecute a business for violating the health order.
Okay. But if hypothetically, we had a business here in Folsom that was being very reckless, not abiding by the health orders, if we could do contact tracing and confirm that they were responsible for dozens of positive cases, and we wanted to take action, we could, we just have to have the will to do the criminal charges.
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And in this proposed ordinance for the county, it refers to an enforcement officer. Who is that?
The enforcement officer, as defined, is very broad. It includes mostly, primarily, the county health officers, but also any law enforcement officers.
Okay. And the county has the authority to impose, if they were to adopt this, they have the authority to impose this on incorporated areas like Folsom?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Wong? Carrie, anything?
Really just a comment. My understanding is that up to this point, when there have been actions taken against, against, and predominantly businesses, because I don't know that individuals' actions have actually made the news, they make social media, but they don't make the news feed. And my understanding is that where there have been issues, and I'll point at South Lake Tahoe, because it's not even in this county, the actions that were taken, it was mostly bars and restaurants, and what happened as a result of those violations and not following the orders that were applicable in a given county at a given moment in time, they were pulling people's liquor licenses, and in some cases, business licenses. So I think that, that, we need to keep that in mind, because that doesn't really jive with what you just told us, that, that that would be a civil, you know, a civil action, so.
Well, so there's, some of those businesses are licensed by the state, so that would just be another, I guess, way to make them comply.
Those are agents of the state, correct, and they are, they are enforceable through all the mechanisms, but what I discussed about the criminal aspect of, of the enforcement, that's in the statute. That's what it says. Violating the health orders are punishable as misdemeanor. Obviously, all the agencies who have the ability to issue permits and licenses with conditions, they can also act on those permits and licenses, such as ABC liquor license, like Councilmember Howell mentioned.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question. So barber shops, beauty salons, restaurants are all overseen by the county public health. In this case here, the same would apply to bookstores, shops, Hallmark stores, et cetera?
Correct. Any and all legal entity engaged in the business of commerce.
Except that I'm not sure that, that retail shops are subject to the same rules and requirements that the health, for county health inspections.
Well, they are theoretically under a capacity limitation right now, so they would fall under the commercial section of this that's up on the screen, just like anybody else.
No, I'm sure they would, I think, but I think what Rosario was getting to is the county, the county health folks. No, I'm sure they would, I think, but I think what Rosario was getting to is the county, the county health folks. And I don't know that they have any relationship on the retail side. I think it's really just.
Oh, yeah.
There's a, there's different sets of regulations depending.
Yeah, they have a business license that they got from the city, so the county doesn't really have jurisdiction over that.
Right.
That would have to be.
Okay.
A city imposed change.
Yes.
Yeah.
Councilman Chalamchela.
I know we are all in this pandemic together, and there is a state level regulations, county level, and without those ordinances passing, can we take any action on the people who are not following some of those health orders? Even by looking at the state level, you know, there are so many coming every day nowadays. I'm talking only the people who are not following and spreading the disease.
Yes, councilmember Chalamchela, the the answer is yes. We do have the ability to enforce current health orders.
Right.
Through the enforcement mechanisms we have just been discussing. Either issuing a criminal citation prosecutable by the district attorney's office or some other administrative actions if some violators have a license or permit at stake, such as a liquor license with ABC.
And is county, Madam Manager, I think you might have told me, county approached us before with the proposal, we are coming on this one. Did they take any input from Folsom or just they are coming up with whatever they want?
Perhaps city manager can elaborate on this. The county has reached out to cities and all, not just cities, but also other stakeholders within the county a number of times to discuss this proposed ordinance. They didn't just put this on the board supervisors' agenda and then ask the supervisors to pass. However, I'm not, I'm not at liberty to discuss the legal implications of of their conversation with all the stakeholders, other than what they have discussed with us.
Okay.
But yes, there have been multiple opportunities. I myself participated in at least three, maybe four meetings with county officials to fully understand this urgency ordinance, so it was not a surprise. They took a lot of time to vet it at the staff level, and I understand our police chief as well has been involved in law enforcement conversations along the same line. So kind of tested and and information shared at different levels of government.
Yeah, since this case is going on for a while, did we ever seen our businesses in Folsom are violating any of this, even any at any level?
We have been, we are blessed with a business community that understands the needs for these public health orders. So in our police department, we have a community service officer who's dedicated full time to COVID concerns, complaints, following up on the public health orders. And we also have a sergeant, you know, out in the field who helps with those issues as well. And up to this point, I'm very proud of my Folsom community of 30 years that when we have run into situations where we're aware a business is perhaps doesn't understand the public health order, is just, you know, not in compliance with a part of the health order, nine times out of 10, and chief can, you know, jump in if I'm saying anything off key here, that is handled by just a simple phone call from the police department and just say, you may not be aware.
Yeah.
And then it's just taken care of. That, you know, one out of 10 is sometimes escalates to a visit to the business. Very rare, but again, that has just taken care of it. So we are, we use the term, we coach to compliance here. We seek to educate and coach before bringing down any kind of hammer. And the hammer has not even come out of its tool belt at this point in our, in this journey.
Right, thank you. You know, when I was reading, I don't, is it?
It's okay.
Is it okay? When I was reading through this one, I know I'm a new council member, but forget about the councilship. I put myself as a small business owner in town. It hurt me. We are going through the, you know, this pandemic, last eight months, 10 months. So many businesses are at the verge of nonexistence, or they're gone. And when I see, we're going to give you $10,000 penalty on top of that, I felt it. Nothing to do with my city council, but now I'm sitting here, you know, in last 30 seconds. No. I thank you for endorsing what I was thinking through the education or advice. I think we can tell our people if you are making some, you know, not great decisions, it is going to hurt many other people. Again, as I said, we are all in the game in the COVID. I totally understand, you know, we are coming up to the ICU limitations and all those.
Mr. Chalamchela, let me, let's give the public an opportunity to weigh in before we deliberate.
Okay.
Okay, so we have received dozens, I would say, emails on this subject. If your email arrived prior to, let's say, 5 o'clock, maybe, those were all forwarded to the council, we have read all of those. We have many speakers who want to speak. If your email came after 5 o'clock, we have those and we can read those into the record if necessary. So let's go ahead and start with the folks who are here in the chambers who have filled out a speaker card, please. If you would, when you come to the the microphone, just keep your mask on, we'll be able to hear you just fine, okay?
Mayor, thank you so much for coaching me.
We're all learning.
We did decide to throw you guys right into the fire on the first night.
Okay, so so for those of you that it's your first time speaking, we typically have three minutes per speaker, so we'll set the timer. You'll see there's a timer at the podium that will flash yellow when you have 30 seconds to sum up your comments. We'd like to call a couple in order so the person can come speak and then the next person knows that they're on deck. So your first speaker tonight will be Tiffany Ayala, and Tiffany will be followed by Jackie Saletti. So Tiffany, come on down.
Hi. Welcome Tiffany, right, this other small little microphone, right there, there you go.
Hi, how are you guys? My family has owned a business in Folsom since 1994. Small and individual owned businesses are what makes this town great. It's what I love about Folsom. The past nine months have been a struggle to keep our head above water financially and emotionally. The constant changing of guidelines, rules, and guidance is absurd. How do we go on and continue another three, four, five months and 10 or $20,000 in fines? We are being safe, having safe practices, following guidelines and recommendations. The bottom line is we are doing what we know is best, providing for our families, putting food on our table, and providing jobs to the community. We will not survive another X amount of months while they decide what's going on or how to proceed moving forward. Wondering if today will be the day we receive a fine that will put us completely out of business. It's amazing to me why you can spend an unlimited amount of time in Walmart or Home Depot, but not 45 minutes or half hour in a restaurant. That is all I have.
Thank you for doing business in Folsom, Tiffany. We're happy to have the Gold Miner Cafe back here.
Next will be Jackie Saletti, and Jackie will be followed by Frank and Tista Visconti.
Welcome Jackie.
Hi, thank you and welcome, you too, and thank you for taking the time to hear us. My name is Jackie Saletti. I've been blessed to be a small business owner in Folsom for 24 years. I've lived in Folsom for 32 years. I'm not not only here for myself, but for every other, sorry, I'm gonna cry. Every other small business suffering through these shutdowns. It has been nine months. Take a second and think, how would I survive with minimal or no income for nine months? Your answer would be you couldn't, you would be scared as hell. In the beginning, we all complied with the two-week closure, even with zero science at the time to back this. We wanted to keep our communities safe. As we all know, this two-week shutdown to help stop the spread is now nine months in. Meanwhile, we've had little to no paycheck, some living off of our savings, while others are creating more and more debt, trying to comply to all the guidelines. Some families were spending thousands retrofitting their small businesses just to be able to even only partially open. Other families still had to remain shut down even longer. We have all bawbed and weaved through these random shutdowns, just trying to make a living or even just to get by. We have putting been putting our faith and livelihoods in the elected officials while our surrounding towns had remained open, Folsom was still closed. Watching everything I have worked for slip one exit up the freeway to open businesses and communities. I have reached out in the past only to get no real answers on why Folsom was still closed. It felt like our city was not fighting for our civil liberties. Maybe it is time to branch off of Sacramento County, become our own county, at least in regards to COVID. I'm not one to say I understand how this part all works, but I can tell you, a city that has 82,000 people, we have had nine deaths, so we're doing something right. This, this is one ten thousandths of one percent. These lockdowns do not seem justified. Ask yourself, why are small businesses being targeted? It cannot be for our safety if one can go to Costco, Walmart, Target, fast food, basically big box stores. My small business is a hair salon. To become a licensed stylist, we must complete 1,600 hours of sanitation and customer safety classes. That is 40 hours a week, full time, for 10 and a half months. 10 and a half months. Our environment is clearly safer in stopping the spread than these big box stores. The Constitution states that we have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. It's pretty clear these guidelines are crushing all three. I am more afraid of what our government has and is still doing than what the virus has done to our community. Now, as if it hasn't been bad enough, our government wants to further crush our small businesses with the threat of a third shutdown, this time with the threat of a fine as high as $10,000, plus any fees, fines, late charges, attorney fees associated with collecting these fines. At this point, small businesses are just trying to survive. As our elected officials, I implore you to stand up for our constitutional rights and the community we all live in. Do not support these new fines to already starving, destroyed small businesses. Instead, lift us up, help us to regain our livelihoods and to prosper once again. God bless America, home of the brave, land of the free. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, thank you. Thank you for doing business in Folsom, Jackie, and for being here tonight. Come on up, Frank and Tista.
Next will be Frank and Tista Visconti, who will be followed by Bruce Klein.
Welcome.
This is different than the bar. Good evening. I appreciate being able to speak to all you here tonight, and thank you in advance for listening to our concerns. The city council has always advocated for small businesses, and we need your support and advocacy now more than ever. My brother and I are here to speak on behalf of our family restaurant, Visconti's, that's been lucky enough to call Folsom their home for 28 years. We are also here to express the concerns that all business owners are having in 2020. As long as safety measures are being practiced, such as wiping of all surfaces regularly, proper distancing, partitions, wearing masks, hand sanitizers, gloves, et cetera, there's no need to close businesses. We can't pick and choose which business can or cannot operate. It's not as if every grocery store, Home Depot, are going around and wiping down every apple or every wrench after someone touches it. The economy has to operate naturally. Restaurants are actually one of the safest places to be. We have spent $25,000 this year in updates on our facility to comply with COVID safety measures for indoor and outdoor dining guidelines. Restaurants have hood systems that are in place to filter and move air around at all times. There are air return vents every 20 or so feet that pull air out of the restaurant constantly. We can't have small business owners and employees who live paycheck to paycheck fail and become homeless on top of the damage the pandemic's already done. This is only making things worse. People must be allowed to make their own decisions. If they would like to go out to dinner, to Home Depot, or stay at home, that should be up to them to do any of those things. All businesses have the right to fight safely, to keep their doors open, the keys to minimize damage. And closing businesses is only adding to that damage. It's not constitutional, and it's simply not the American way. As long as we keep the greater good of the human race in mind while we operate safely and cautiously, then we should be able to operate. Profit is not our top concern this year. What is of our concern right now is being able to pay our bills, our taxes, and maintaining the ability to stay afloat as we get through this together. We hope that you as Folsom City Council members will be one of many voices that helps us reopen Folsom's economy and helps prevent any other small businesses from being forced to close their doors. We ask that you help us be able to run our business with safety measures in place without the fear of outrageous fines being imposed for doing those, for doing so. The time is now, and we can't wait any longer.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for doing business in Folsom. Love that vodka pasta.
Next will be Bruce Klein, and Bruce will be followed by Mike Bowden.
Welcome, Bruce.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Congratulations, councilmembers Waikie and Rosario, great to see you and great to have you back, Mayor Aquino.
Thank you.
Bruce Klein, 30-plus year resident of the city of Folsom. My wife Julie and I live here and are proud residents of Folsom. Awesome, a strong believer in masks, social distancing, and all it takes to make sure that we protect ourselves from the virus. Let me just start by saying that this city has its power under the city charter. You have the power under your charter to authorize ordinances under health, safety, morals, and public welfare. That's your charge as a city council. It is not the county's charge to determine whether we want to enforce health, safety measures within our city. Certainly, they can adopt an ordinance, and I'll address the incorporated versus unincorporated city, but we as a charter city have long determined that that's our role in making sure we protect our residents and our businesses. I'm not going to address whether all the state guidelines and ordinances actually go to the heart of the COVID issue, because I don't believe they do. But let's just assume they do for a second. There are many serious problems with this ordinance as proposed by the county. Number one is the charter city issue. And I would propose that the, that if the mayor ultimately writes a letter to the council, or the mayor of the county council and the county board of supervisors, the first issue ought to be, we need to make sure we do what we're doing in our charter city. If you want to apply this ordinance, apply it to unincorporated areas of the county, but not incorporated areas like the seven other cities within the city or within the county. You could, they could do that by an easy modification to this ordinance by saying it does not apply to incorporated cities unless the city decides by resolution that it wants the county to come in and be an enforcement mechanism for them. Problem number two, the county acknowledges within its ordinance, in the staff report on page 18, and as the city attorney has already addressed, that there are many tools available to the county already to enforce these types of ordinances. City attorney mentioned misdemeanor prosecutions. However, in the staff report, they point out that the county itself could adopt these ordinances as infractions to have a much more expeditious way to enforce those if it wanted to. It can sue, it can get injunctions, and it can, of course, go after certain licenses that are issued by the by the county. So there are lots and lots of tools, so why is it taking this step? Problem number three, and this is huge. What is an order? I mean, every week, it seems like there's some new order. But if you look at that order, and I encourage you all to go back to the ordinance on page 20 and look at what that order that order is. It's impossible for any small business probably to determine what that order is. These decisions in terms of an order are made without any input from the public whatsoever. They're made and edicts are handed down, and then we now have to abide by that. But any edict or any order at the state level or the county level now becomes something that's enforceable under this proposed ordinance. Problem number four, the county enforcement officer, Mayor Aquino, asked the question. Well, it's not just the health officer, it's a code enforcement officer. So we're going to ask a code enforcement officer to go out and determine the severity of a particular violation and then levy some sort of fine, a fine which we don't even know what that might be. In my opinion, that is highly overreaching. It's sort of like, to quote a former chief of police when I spoke to him just recently, it's like giving a police officer who enforces traffic violations an opportunity to go out and cite Bruce Klein and then determine what that fine is going to be for running the red light. And then I'm going to go to the county courthouse, and they're going to determine whether he was right in terms of the level of fine that they imposed. There's no direct, no discretion there whatsoever. They have not done the hard work to go through and determine a mask violation is worth 500, a social distancing violation is worth 750. The next is the incorporated versus unincorporated. The next is the incorporated versus unincorporated area, and I've already talked about that. And I encourage the council to push back on that issue and say, as to us, thanks, but no thanks. And if you want to do this ordinance, then let us out. Problem number six. There is no warning provision within this ordinance at all. They have a provision relative of grace period, but there's no warnings at all. Why, long history in the city of Folsom, we've always operated under the warning philosophy. And as the city manager has already articulated, warnings work. That should be built into the ordinance first and foremost. In summary, I encourage the city council to authorize the mayor to sign an ordinance opposing this ordinance, excuse me, signed a letter opposing this ordinance. And if the county is going to adopt it, then let us opt out unless we want to opt in at some later point. Two, you should provide that, at least there should be some warnings built into the ordinance. And finally, specify what the violations are. Direct their staff to go back and figure out what these violations are and come up with a table like you might have for traffic violations as to this one's a violation, it cost this much, et cetera. So go back, make sure they do the hard work, and I encourage the city council to vehemently oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce. We always appreciate your insight. Mike Bowden.
And Mike will be followed by Joe Galliardi.
Hello, Mike, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. I'm kind of nervous, never done this before.
It's okay. Take your time.
So I'm just a owner of a small construction business, nothing big. I really haven't been affected by this that much. But through the community, I see a lot of friends that have businesses and are. And my question to you would be, all of you, has any of you ever owned a small business? And have you? Have you ever actually written out a payroll check? Actually, you write it out. I do. I know what it's like.
Yes.
Being a small construction business through the years, right now, it's great. In the years past, when I moved here from the Bay Area, it was tough. I can remember, I did not get my draws on a timely manner, yet I still paid my guys. But now, our small businesses are being told to shut down. How do you write a payroll check because you want to keep your employees? It's tough to get in good place. When you have them, you don't want to lose them. This is craziness, to be frank. Again, I'm just a construction worker. I'm not a lawyer, I'm not highly educated, but I do have common sense that says, this is just, this is not going to work. Do you, as city council members, have the power to do something about these ordinances?
We can vote no.
You can vote no.
We can make a recommendation tonight to the board of supervisors. That's what we're, yeah.
And will you?
Well, that's what we're going to deliberate after we hear all the public comment.
Yeah, for your, you know, your small businesses in Folsom, which makes up Folsom, basically. I myself go into Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, no problem. Yet they're asking restaurants to shut down. It makes no sense. So again, I'm just here to...
Thank you for coming tonight, Mike. Thank you for doing business in Folsom.
Thank you.
Hello, Joe, welcome.
Next is Joe Galliardi, and Joe will be followed by Colleen Shannon.
Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to, I think Bruce Klein covered a lot of what I wanted to say, but I wanted to bring up a few things. First of all, the county got $184 million in grant money from the federal government, and none of it flowed through to our city to be able to help our businesses. That's a travesty in itself. Secondly, all these edicts about these practicing, no proof has been shown that this occurs in our restaurants or our barber shops or our hair salons or anything, and that's the people that are being hurt, our small businesses. So it seems ludicrous that we would be passing fines onto people that are already been put in an untenable position. So I think what Bruce suggested was a strong letter coming from this body that opposes this ordinance. My concern, though, is this is an urgency ordinance that takes a four-fifths vote. That won't stop them from bringing an ordinance back in 30 days that only takes a three-fifths vote. So we need to send a strong message that we don't want to see this occur in Folsom, let alone the whole county, and to start having some of that money that they get through the CARES Act and others to be passed down so that we can help our businesses instead of the way it is today where none of that came to you. That's really a hard thing to swallow. The second thing is, you know, it's better to use a carrot than a stick. We should incentivize people to be able to comply, but, you know, the reality is very few people don't comply with this at all. So I would guess that most of the people in Folsom, you wouldn't have any challenges. But to exemplify that, you know, we've been pushing that when you evaluate this, you do it by a smaller area, such as a zip code. And whenever we've taken that data and analyzed it for what happens in the city of Folsom, we're at a better tier than we are in the county of Sacramento. And I would say that that's probably the case also with this. So for us to get ourselves out of this ordinance, whether it be opposing it countywide or because we're a charter city, would be the way that we should move. We, as the Chamber of Commerce, voted to oppose this and sent letters and encouraged everyone to do the same to our county supervisors. We're fortunate. Our county supervisor is in support of opposing it, but that's one person, and it takes two to at least kill this, and it'll take more than that for long term. So I hope that you'll send a message to the rest of the board of supervisors that this is a bad idea and not to move forward. Thank you.
Next is Colleen Shannon, and Colleen will be followed by Camille Shannon.
Welcome, Colleen.
Next time, can I please not speak after Joe? Those are big shoes to fill. I'm here also as a business owner in Folsom. My husband and I own a small business, and we are incredibly fortunate that we have been deemed essential. We've been able to stay open the entire time. We've been able to serve our community to the best of our ability. But what we have found over and over again is ourselves in this conversation night after night, what if they told us to shut down? What would we do? And we find ourselves again and again saying, we would not shut down. If you tell us that we have to stop providing for our families, if you tell us that we have to stop providing for our employees' families, that our kids aren't going to be able to have new shoes or food to eat, over and over again, we say we would do anything to keep our business open. I'm incredibly grateful that our council is made up of similar small business owners, because you guys have all been in that same position of going, what would I do if this was me? And I think we need to stand up, and we have to say no. At some point, we have to tell the government above us that we will not stand for the edicts that they are handing down and for the mandates that they are giving us. There's a great meme going around about eating in a restaurant that you can eat inside as long as the inside is outside. And that sums up the stupidity of what we are facing. And if we agree to allow enforcement and fines to be handed down to our businesses in Folsom, we are saying, we agree with the stupidity that you can eat outside as long as the inside is outside. It just does not make sense. I feel like I can see the direction that this is going for our community, but I feel like it's important for all of us to stand up and to let you know that we support standing against this kind of tyranny in our city and within our county and even within our state and within our country. So, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Camille, come on up. How old are you, Camille?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Take it away.
Honored leaders of our community, I think that we should not fine people for simply being in business. It can take money away from small businesses because they will either close or be forced to close. This can decompose the economy because small businesses may not be able to afford the fines while large companies can. This sucks customers away from small businesses and forces many people to work for larger companies. It may also inadvertently affect children because closing businesses makes it so that parents can't put food on the table for their family. This may also increase suicide rates even more than they have because of harder living conditions. One more thing. Where does the money from the fines go? Does it go to supporting small businesses and helping the community? What kind of Christmas do you want our small businesses to have? Happy holidays.
Let's just let Camille write the letter to the county board of supervisors.
Now, and in fact, I want to answer, Camille, because...
That's an excellent question.
It is spelled out. It goes directly to the county.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
And I guess to the sheriff's department, too. I'm kidding.
Do we have any other speakers?
You have no further request to speak on this item.
Okay. I want to do this very systematically because I don't want this to turn into a very prolonged discussion when it doesn't need to be. Are there any other questions from the council to city staff? Okay.
I don't have any. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, then that's what I want. I want, the purpose of this is to, if we choose, give direction to the county of Sacramento, let them know our position, or take no position, or whatever. So I'm asking for a motion regarding the position that we are taking on this item.
I would move that we oppose the ordinance.
I'll second. Correct. Shall we give it to Councilmember Rodriguez tonight?
Yes, absolutely.
That's who I heard first.
So we have a motion to oppose the county ordinance. We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Chalamchela, would you like to say something at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. I know, I'm still learning. Hour two, I guess.
You're doing fine.
Exactly, it's hour two. No, thank you for, you know, those who are coming here and speaking about it. Mike, you made a great point, common sense. Go with the common sense. You are not affected, but you are here for the fellow small businesses. And we all know, this city or this county, state, or country runs on small businesses only. Thank you so much for being here. I just want to, you know, thank them on that one, probably once we go and follow on it.
Any other commentary?
Yeah, I think it shouldn't go without notice that part of the reason why I wanted this to be on the agenda tonight is because there's sort of the COVID situation that we're dealing with, and then there's kind of macro forces at play. And I think Mr. Klein got to this point, which is that we have seen, over many, many years, a steady erosion of local control in California for charter cities and for all types of cities. And this is another example of that, where the county is trying to help, and in fact, what they are doing is undercutting us. So at the, you know, at the risk of being redundant, and just to really drive this point home, because I want to make sure everybody hears it from me, is that even if the ordinance is well-intentioned, it's the most egregious version of trampling on small business owners, okay, who are trying to maintain their livelihood and the livelihoods of those who work for them, okay? It also continues to feed the misplaced notion that somehow small businesses are the most dangerous vector for COVID when that plainly has not been proven, okay? The, you know, I believe in science. I trust that masks and social distancing are effective measures to try and stop the spread of this thing. And I believe that those things work at my barber shop, and they work at Rosario's Taqueria, and they work in Target, okay? And we all have to come to terms with that. The county isn't quite there, but we absolutely need to oppose this ordinance.
Okay. Any other comments, Carrie?
Yep, I just think that it's important to understand that I agree entirely with Mike, given what has happened. We, you, sent letters to the county months ago to try to get things looked at more by zip code. I know the business community has put a big effort forth to do that because what's happening in Folsom is not necessarily reflected in what's happening in Sac County or in all of California, for that matter. I understand the risk in our doing that if we somehow could extricate the 95630 zip code from the rest of the county. My only concern in that case is that we'd, not that this would necessarily be a bad thing for business, but I think it would be inundated with people, those same people from Folsom that went to El Dorado Hills or El Dorado County when things were closed here. And I suspect that that same thing would happen with people from Sacramento and other areas to the west of us coming to Folsom if we were somehow able to extricate ourselves. So I'm not sure that that's necessarily a perfect solution, but the county moving forward with this ability to require excessive fines, which go to the county, it's not like they would even, it's not like the $10,000 fine is going to stay in the city of Folsom. And to your daughter's point, that doesn't help anybody. And, you know, given the scandal that has already taken place at the county, I'm, you know, I'm even more concerned about what they did with all of that money and how they managed to funnel that into the sheriff's department. But having said that, so that's why I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Rosario, anything, Dan?
Yeah, I definitely agree with all of you. I think this is a time when our business community needs to know that we support them and we want to help them and we want to see them succeed, especially when so many of them feel that by the end of this year, they don't know what's coming in 2021.
Okay, we have a motion to oppose the county proposed ordinance that would levy fines. We have a motion in a second. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, can I ask that it be more than just a letter, that someone actually have a testimony? And in addition, lobby as many of the county supervisors as possible so that it doesn't go beyond this and not just a letter, but have testimony?
We will let the new mayor work with the city manager to deliver the city of Folsom's position. Yes, thank you.
Elaine, is this on their agenda for tomorrow morning?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. It's supposed to be heard mid-morning, I think as early as 9:00 or 9:30.
Okay. Okay, moving on to city manager reports.
All right. I will reserve the bulk of my comments for tomorrow night's regular city council meeting. for tomorrow night's regular city council meeting. Tonight, I really just wanted to thank again Andy and Ernie and congratulate YK and Rosario. I also wanted to congratulate Mayor Kozlowski and Vice Mayor Aquino. I know that you will continue to serve our residents very well in your new roles. I also want to thank Vice Mayor Aquino for her extraordinary service to all of us over the last year as mayor. Sarah, you are absolutely expert, tireless, and smart in representing the city locally, regionally, statewide, and nationally. Throughout your tenure, and particularly during our state of emergency, you went above and beyond the call of duty more times than I can count to help out where you were needed the most. Thank you for being an outstanding mayor and professional partner.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Rodriguez, would you like to make any comments or report anything out?
Well, it's great to see the support that the small businesses have had. Sheriff, to you as well. I watched you last year, and I just want to thank you for leading the city through such a really unprecedented year. And Mike, I look forward to working with you. Congratulations on becoming mayor.
Thank you. Carrie?
Sarah, thanks for all your efforts